Hey. Oh, I'm not up there anything. I'm in town now. Nobody wants to see me anyways. I just don't stay home.
Uh, we're probably not gonna need to look at it really. I seriously doubt you'll need it. And if I'm wrong, my apologies. If they wanted us to have it, they'd have given it to us ahead of time, right?
Careful touching things.
I know.
That's what I said on last time.
I had no signal on my monitor. I don't know.
Why? Everybody else is on my phone.
No.
Where's the power on them? Upper right? Right, uh, right there.
I know, it's always him.
It's your HDMI.
Oh, it's the HDMI, okay.
It must be wonky.
When they, when they zip tie them in, they become zero plus.
Yeah, there's no.
You move an inch, you're stressing something.
We'll have to get a new cord, but let's see, we can get it working for now.
And a new cord.
Nope.
Wow, that's a deals, doesn't it?
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I'll just like this the whole meeting.
I'll order yours. Don't touch it.
I'm gonna watch that.
I'm gonna have to do a little sharing with Karen.
That is not true. Fair enough. That'll be good enough or else it's gonna like. Everybody ready? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, times one oh two. We are convening a city commission workshop. And welcome to everyone. If you would rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here today. Help us to forward the future of this city. To have open minds and, and forward-looking thoughts. Bless us with your peace and grace. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call, zone one. Zone two.
Here.
Zone three.
Here.
Zone four.
Here.
And the mayor is here as well as city administrator and deputy city clerk. And we are ready for business. I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the commission. We have two presenters today. In the order of the master plan and the financing of the master plan. The first presenter, Derek Wayne Scott, who is a city engineer. And his previous firm has produced the stormwater master plan in draft form today. The goal for today's meeting will be to make sure all the commission's questions are answered by the study. And be able to then have a management agenda for a viable option and implementation. The second presenter will be Mike Burton with the firm of Adelis Associates. Mike has been in this for probably thirty-five, forty years now, doing this type of assessment and base study work. He has proposed we give a piece of research into the finances for showing our improvements, etc., in process. And the idea is to have the commission people ask any questions of people who would be experts in dealing with the studies. So that can be made with this on the agenda for a viable option for the city. With that, Mr. Mayor, it's okay, I'll just call up Derek and ask him to proceed with discussing the master plan.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, good afternoon. It's glad to be here today. My name is Derek Wayne Scott. An engineer with a project company supporting the entire country. Lake Helen. I'm here to present a similar master plan than my former opponent prepared and submitted before we did ECT. How can we go forward? Before I get into it, just a couple of high-level conversation points about the master plan. It was completed before Hurricane Ian, uh, burst in its draft form. So, um, a few things that we learned with Ian is that floodplight has shown the PMS pretty accurate. We can experience flood levels that the maps show in Lake Helen, Lake Hurles, and other parts of the city. The model shows two areas that aren't in floodplight, which are good flood. And with that being said, the stages of Lake Helen, the part that we experienced today have been at those levels before. The St. John's River Water Management District has a monitoring station in Lake Helen that goes back daily data to nineteen ninety. And it shows the ups and downs of Lake Helen. Looking back in historical areas, areas provided by Google, you can see the land ridges from two years ago and see the flood. So Lake Helen is fluctuating, Lake Hurles also fluctuates. The master plan is a very high-level study. It is not a detailed site-specific study, except for the few projects that we identified as unnecessary. The study prepares water quality projects and water quantity projects in order to distinct, um, different types of projects. Water quality is meant to treat the water and make it better for those who spend the plane. And water quantity is intended to handle the storms. Normally is reserved for large projects like subdivisions where they build stormwater retention facilities to help accommodate and continually use that to work that we use the pre and post volume of runoff. And post runoff, obviously, you have a higher volume of runoff that gives you some. With that being said, this is a high-level report. We can get into the nitty-gritty's. If you'd like, I'll answer your questions and add a presentation. I don't do very well with written documents. I'm much more of a pretty good speaker. So if I get a little awkward with this, I apologize. Now, that being said, this was, this report was done by ECT. It was done by engineers who were not familiar with Lake Helen on purpose so that they didn't get into the nitty-gritty. They don't have knowledge that an engineer such as myself that has been working with Lake Helen for the past three and a half years would have the intent there was to focus very high-level, outsider-looking, and what needs to happen. And I think that's all of the high-level things that you're talking about. Does anyone have any questions about those statements?
Yeah, I do. There is, you said that we're not in the floodplain that did the flooding during the Ian. Where have you identified that a series of opportunities will be able to include them moving forward?
They are identified in the maps in the cause of the whole report. We included volume three, which is all of the maps in large scale all together instead of map one. Map one kind of make it difficult for all of our young people to see. The flooding is on private property. And so there's nothing that Lake Helen can really do except identify. Looking back in these areas, the ones that comes to mind are the ones on High Street, north of Main Street. There are the few little lakes behind the houses that are possible. So the report, because it was proposed in, doesn't address extreme levels of those stormwater experiences.
Just to, just to follow up to that question, um, when, when they were omitted from the floodplain, is that because they came under the guise of a hundred-year flood rather than what happened to us?
My guess, and it's just a guess, is that the lakes are so small, people just hit mountains. Because they, they are, you know, small rivers. That's just the case though.
And my only question about that was, does, does any of the runoff from our streets exacerbate the problem in those isolated areas? Or, or did you even address that? Probably haven't.
That was not. Um, Lake Helen does not have a master stormwater system. Many of your streets don't even have any, uh, drainage ports. And you get into a condition where this is the way it was when it broke rules. This is what it is then. As a matter of fact, and I apologize for the lack of input. That, that is just the case, is that this is the way it was, this is the way it is. The, one more statement is, you know, the, the projects that are defined in the master plan are not the extensive list of projects that Lake Helen needs to consider. Normal circumstances, the public works department will have their own list of projects that they know about upon a severe incident of base knowledge of Lake Helen's streets and, and investment. Those projects would show up in the capital improvement program to be considered for funding. But these projects are much higher level projects. If you had a significant public works department, you would have another list of projects that they would do. I can do a few, but I am not full-time with Helen employee. I pay attention as much as I can when I drive through town, but I'm not working here forty hours a week. I, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna have, if the report is hundred thousand level, I'm gonna be at four five thousand level. You need people that are a thousand, like, in Brooklyn. If that answers you?
It does, thank you.
Uh, I've got a lot of issues with what's been presented in this manual. Evidently, they did not take into consideration the DEP's requirements on stormwater control. It also does not include the necessity of land acquisition for stormwater retention areas. And some of the issues are over piping going way beyond what DEP's gonna allow permitting for the pipes to be. And I would think that an organization that's that big should know what the requirements are from the DEP before they present something and not show what needs to truly be done. There's also, we have some street level flooding that occurs at stormwater systems on it that are inadequate to handle the amount from a normal one-inch-per-hour shower. And the streets get flooded that are not addressed in this. And hopefully they will get addressed in a future plan. But for the money we spent on this plan, I think it was wasted. It's not that accurate or good of a plan. It's a basic starter plan that somebody would start with and then carry on from there. I think, uh, any plan that we do needs to be better addressed than what this plan is even close to being. I put this at a level subpar to what I would expect from a company like this.
Understood, Mr. Mayor. Um, some of the things that you just talked about or what I just addressed is that some of the smaller projects need to be in the capital improvement program already. We, Lake Helen didn't have a master plan, so this is a starter project. Let's address that. Now, is the next one anything better? Absolutely. I agree. But you don't have a public works director. A public works director would be able to review this in a draft stage and identify some of those key locations that need.
They should have been able to pull up all the work that we had, that we paid the county to do with the stormwater systems around the town.
The problem with the existing stormwater systems, Commissioner, is that they're not being maintained on a routine basis.
I know that. That's the big issue with them, they're not being maintained.
That is a significant issue that every city experiences. We pulled pipes out of beach, uh, New Center Beach, they're ninety-five percent wet with the beach. Those don't work. One inch of rain, they don't work. So there's a lot of progress that needs to start with this. And in five years, it probably needs to be revisited and improved.
And perhaps not even five years. I mean, if we can get proper funding and through what we're discussing later with the assessments and fund this properly and spread it out to where it's reasonable cost to the citizens, we might can address this with some forgivable grants that will help us tremendously. And, um, we may not even be five years down the road on, on, on that. So that would be, be a big start. This could be a big first step. Journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step. Whoever said that, some Chinese, very wise man.
Anyone?
All right. So the intent of the master plan is, of course, to create a roadmap to start looking for a stormwater plan. And as I said, the report and its projects were accepted before Hurricane Ian. The draft was done early December, and we had an annual lake. And obviously, you can change a lot of things, over the five hundred year event. So no requirement for designing up to a five hundred year event exists, according to my knowledge. So excuse me back. It wasn't. This, uh, report, the mean annual, which is once every two point three three years, we get that five inches in an hour. Twenty-five year, twenty-four hour event, and a hundred year, twenty-four hour event. Frame goes with the improvement. I'm not gonna read you guys the, the report. Presentation, I think, just take away from it, there's an existing condition, you've got twenty inundated nodes. Node is basically, um, it's what we call a hole. I guess that's the other thing, one of the foot is a significant part of the town. It is a, um, isolated basin, there's no outfall for it. Some of the urban parts, south and east, have a stream that goes to Lake Mason, was positive at the start. Lake Harbin, Lake Helen, upwards, John Street, there is no positive outfall. Everything that ranks says. We have been exploring, um, trying to come up with a plan. We alerted the league that we need to start exploring the St. John's River Water Management District. On when this, Lake Harbin and Lake Helen get to the stage of direct, we have a pumping system. Free storm, after storm, where can they send it? That's the big question that we don't have.
Free storm is risky, I've seen that done in places. And you know those storms turn sometimes? And if you pump a foot of water off the lake and the storm turns, and then the drought sets in, that can be, that can be bad. I've seen that happen in places. But a post-storm pumping system could certainly be valuable.
You can make them sick when you start pumping water. You can flood a neighbor out, um, which could result in loss mitigation. But anyway. The, uh, inundated water systems are shown in the maps. I submitted volume three, which has all of the maps, same with, and they're highlighted when and where they are inundated during the pre-events. The master plan has developed a series of eleven projects and did a preliminary process and made two thousand and twenty-two dollars. So after you prepare it for future, you have to put interest in inflation on top of the population. And the report has a summary of those improvements. Your existing conditions, model is up on screen now. This is, here's the sound section. It shows you where it's inundating, some of these places you know. The part that's on High Street, on this exhibit, which is almost a speck that in the middle of the picture, shows the areas that were experiencing flooding behind the houses on private property. It also shows the flooding on Lake Cloud, which is also private property. If I'm not mistaken, those properties are the properties that are not in the flood map run between. Most of the other areas that are inundated on this map are shown on PMS that are being floodplained in zone A, which means that the PMS has not followed it to give it an elevation. So zone A is one of those, um, if it, if you have, if you had a project, you'd have hired an engineer to determine what zone A elevation. And looking back at the data that's available, you can try and get zone A from Lake Harbin and Lake Helen dialed in to about forty nine. Right now, Lake Helen, when I looked at it, short bill here, was eighty-eight point two. So we're still probably considered in a flood stage. I think most people would agree with that. For the coast conditions, model one, ten years later after that. Model one is immediate projects, model two is the mixed long-term projects, and model three is all of eleven of the best in practice projects combined. And those results are in the twelve point, one, two, and three report. The exact new sum of costs of the eleven projects, immediate projects is a total of two point two million dollars. Mid-month projects is a total of two million dollars, and the green total of four point two inch change in other costs. Immediate projects are projects that you recommend to be done within five years and in long-term, five. Uh, this is the map for just the location of the projects. I expect Lake Earl, Lake Mason, over west end of Avenue, over, uh, the, Commissioner, we didn't do that in place of that over the port on west end of Avenue.
Just means maintenance gone on, if they clear away the weeds that have grown up in.
So we identified that there is actually a washout around the head wall of that over. That also means we have a dust. And then, uh, at Lake, after Hurricane Ian towards the east, east of Lake Hurles, um, out there by King Lake and Muffet. The project prescription for High Street is a rather extensive project to reconstruct High Street, to remove some low spots on some yards. We can accomplish that by lowering the road and re-graduating the drainage where it goes today without going into private property and then keep the rain from Ohio or to High Street on High Street.
I'm just curious, how much is that road? The proposed lowering of that road, about how, eighteen inches, thirty-six inches? You remember? I know that's a petty detail in a way, but. Just curious, when I drive down it, what I'm kind of envisioning?
I read the lecture a little, just where the road is, the lot is a foot below the road.
Okay.
So in order to fit multiple lots, we would have to drop the road up. And then, normally your house pad elevation is typically twelve, eighteen inches above the ground of the road. And in this case, it is the opposite.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And then Lake Earl, damage improvement, uh, this is really erosion protection. Problem, there's, it's, I've been called out multiple times for erosion on the inside. These curves are empty. There is a inadequate smolderage just in there now. I think it's six inches, eight inches, what? Not large enough to come off, coming down the Hendy Road and going into Lake Earl. So that's with this project. Lake Mason Kickley River over improvements, this is an improvement to the size of the pipes. And this is to eliminate the bottleneck and to improve overall drainage along that.
That one should be a multi-jurisdictional project because it's a county road and a county storm drain system. It's got a weir in it to slow down the water from leaving Lake Mason into the other ways. To stop contamination from going, the fish crossing, crossing it.
Is the weir on the south side of?
Yes.
That's farther north than the curve there though, right?
It's in the dip right around the park.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's where that's.
Where's the weir on the south side? And if you look in that storm drain on the south side there, you can see it, that's in that storm drain. The water heads up, flows up over it.
Okay.
Probably more in the lines of an energy dissipated than it is a weir structure.
Yeah, it's on the six inches deep.
There's probably a lot of permanent water. But we can do a surveying of that before we get started on that. And so, then you have a cover improvement, talk about that a little bit ago. And Commissioner, a secret point of maintenance is a big issue. We, we can do all of these projects, both if. We can do all of these projects, but without maintaining what we would have done long-term maintenance of the groundwater infrastructure. This is very problematic water system.
Is, was, excuse me. Was there any consideration in this as far as projecting maintenance costs?
Yeah.
No? Is it, is that a possibility?
When we do your maintenance discussions, we'd rather not submit any costs.
I would, yeah, that's a good idea. Particularly when we start doing individual projects, if we incorporate or request a maintenance schedule and a projection of those costs.
When you get funding to do stuff, you don't consider maintenance, then you're going to get out of trouble.
Yeah.
I can tell you, Fisher, that permitted stormwater system for subdivision, the district requires an inspection of the facilities of two years. They require H.O.A. documents to have quarterly inspections. I feel definitely all that's in place. But it would be the same, once you get it committed, there will be inspection required. Maintenance plan in place.
Yeah.
One of the requirements.
And that's, that's all fine and good that there's an inspection, but then somebody needs to get out there with a back truck and actually solve the problem. That's where the meter starts to run.
Yeah. The new requirement from D.E.P. requires the owner of the maintenance system to maintain it in perpetuity.
Yeah. If you're going to put it in, you're going to deal with it for life.
Well, when you sell a property, you got, they require you to transfer the permit to the owner. All of that conditions go with it. Almost not a quarterly document, but it is. It's long-term projects. The big one on this one is the flow path from Summit, near the Phoenix Drive. Where do the firm, is our firm?
There's an old firm, so something out there with a pond.
The historic flow is from West Dixie over to Deep Creek. And on this map, Deep Creek is just the other side of Pravat Avenue. You kind of see that little gray area there that's kind of like a slight dome on the arid paths where the water's supposed to go. There is a culvert under Pravat that the car that came out and only cleaned around the headwall. They need to come out and scrape their ditches to get the water flowing. And if I'm not mistaken, there, there's a.
But I'm sorry, where is that, where it goes under Pravat? Where does it come out?
Just north of Lake Pearl.
North of Lake Pearl? Okay.
It's, it's not directly across it. It goes diagonally across. So you can find the one headwall and you have to look for the other headwall on the road. But they're there. They're there.
It's that, it's that whole system up there that flows north of that US property.
Yeah.
But the concern that we have in this little pathway is that there's blockages. And you'd like to go out there, find the blockage and remove it, and then take the county to improve the natural drainage pattern east of Pravat to allow for the water. We take no management.
Is the county responsible for that routine maintenance that we were just talking about? Or are we?
I would think that it's a county road, county.
Yeah, I'd think so too. I'd just double check.
It's a county road, even though we annexed the property into the city and stole the county road.
That's what I figured, but I figured I'd ask.
That's a county road, that's a county.
Okay.
Just as we deal with the vacuum.
Oh, true.
We do have one that's related to that on Lake Pearl that they had to clean down during the storm, to drink the property. It's actually on the west, or the east side of Mr. Force's property, on the south side of your property, there's a storm drain canal in there. And it goes through a small culvert under Lake Pearl and goes into that system.
Goes north to that.
Yeah. That needs to be fixed and maybe a larger pipe than that one.
The other projects is an improvement from Lake Helen to Lake Harlan. Putting a proper overflow right now, it's 12-inch, 40-inch metal pipe that we found buried before the storm. It'd be nice to put an official overflow from Lake Helen into Lake Harlan. Horned Avenue project is a water quality project. Goal of the water quality project is to treat the water for its interior links coming off the roads. And because it's a water quality project, there are grants and programs in place and we recommend to keep the last grants. We're thinking of driving one where we got the grant for a good portion of that work. But there are other grants out there that are available for more quality improvements. That's some keys to perfect financially for the city.
Well, I would assume that any, any place where water's coming directly off the road and going into a lake, that would be a water quality issue. And we have quite a few of those in here. So, and if that's better and more forgiven grant money type thing, or better, we should definitely go after them.
Yeah. We got, we got a number of many repairs that went into that, that the county installed back when they did the projects.
Derek, I know you said earlier that there has to be a joint venture discussion on. I'm assuming that if we're going to try to maintain that close basin, Lake Helen, Lake Harlan system, because it all heads towards Deep Creek, that something would have to be done on the southeast side of Lake Harlan. And caught weir rising and then a storm pump of some sort of, and sent it out Ohio. I'm assuming that's probably the closest path. I guess my, my question in all that is, is, I think that is, is an extremely important project, especially in the, I mean, you can look at Harlan today, it hasn't gone down any because Lake Helen keeps weeding into it. And it won't go down until that stops. So I don't know what the study's going to cost. I don't know what it needs to connect those dots, but I think it's a significant part of, of this plan. And I'm not sure how we start the conversation to figure out whether it's going to go through, how many partners holding hands to make it happen. But I would like to see the discussion at least started so we know where we're going with it.
Sure. The, the thought set up and doubts around, I think five years since September, is the pump station in South End of Lake Pearl. Where we pump to, this great question. Should we pump over to east of Ohio, to King Lake and Hunt Lake? Or do we pump west to go right away to use the property, the nation, the government land, and Lake Macy, which has a known outfall? And how do we permit that for emergency situations? The size of help that we would need?
I would think that particular one would create potential for more losses because it's going right into Deltona from there, whereas the one going out of Ohio is a lot less impactful on residents.
Not with Deltona's expansion. They had severe flooding on the east side, along the Deep Creek region, where all that outflow's going to. And there, I hear them complaining all the time about how much Lake Helen is flooding Deltona right now because of all our water going down there.
Well, that's where it's naturally going and that's what's happening. My, my point is, even if it goes out the natural outfall, it's still going to, to, to Deep Creek and out eventually. Actually, some of them may split and get into Lake Monroe, but.
The thing I like about the Lake Macy outfall, it does have laws about pollution, that weeds can, you know, thankfully we didn't have substantial damage from the hurricanes. But it would be nice for Lake Helen and Lake Pearl to be about at least two feet down from river now, especially as we go, as we quickly, the rainy season. So some years I can tell people to break the rain, and other years I can tell people to break the company.
Yeah.
Great photograph, just a little bit. I think back when they were pumping water from Orange City on High Court.
Yeah.
To St. John's. Two years back to back, 80. Although we're in Harlan, it's all about 50. So in two years, and 60 extra, it's got to go somewhere. I'm not sure how, obviously they didn't put in a pump station because they had pumps lining along High Court. I don't know that I would recommend permanent pump station, but an intake should be set up for a central pump, because you don't need to buy a $1,000 pump. Maybe use.
Use it every 25 years. Yeah.
Yeah, then that creates another maintenance issue.
You got to maintain that pump.
Well, yeah, if you, if you buy one, but you know, once again, if it's a tool that you can use every 15 years, you probably, at least at our level, modest level, we consider, you know, the rental option, if you will. That way, you don't have to maintain it, keep it operable year after year after year for a tool that you're not going to use.
Yeah, we're fortunate because of good pump companies in the area. I'm not a salesperson, so I wouldn't.
They're there.
They're there.
Now, the engineer would have to take a look at, but there's also the possibility for a, a natural flow system without a pump to go from Lake Harlan to Mitchell Sports Complex and across Pleasant to the swampy area behind Ivy Court, which drains down into Lake Macy. That would sit multiple water recharge areas for the water to dissipate.
And we, he has some complaints along that avenue after we gave him the.
And the other part of that is, if Harlan needs to be pumped, all those other ones are full already?
Well, the, that's, that's been a big question since.
Right.
How do we solve that? The gravity system is obviously a better option, because anytime you pump something into the district, St. John's Water Management wants to know about, you've got to record it, certain, certain application for something used for that side of the pump. The problem with gravity system is we would be altering drainage pattern for a closed basin. They would look at that, equally this one, what you have is on pumps. But it is, it's still a better option because you don't have to do new parts, you don't have to do old things. It's both.
And if it gets that big, you can always pump, so it's an increasing amount.
It's about, consultors that I have that are based on county by law data from 15 years ago, show about a five to seven foot rise from where the water is now to get over the natural weir, less than five. So that, that's just the ballpark. Hopefully we don't get five feet of water.
If not, there's going to be quite a few hamsters flooded on Michigan.
We, we have a much larger issue. Little bit harder.
I can, I can understand why St. John's Water Management cares a lot about pumping water out, because, you know, right now we're high, but that also creates more pressure down into the opfer. You know, when you increase that column from whatever it is, 18 feet to 25 feet, it increases the pressure. It, that force feeds the opfer that much more quickly. And you pump that away, you're, you're really changing the flow of the whole state.
I'm sure there's an opfer scientist out there who's very happy to be pleased with the levels of that discharge in the opfer. During drought years, of course, we complain about water levels in opfer, how much water is, water restrictions. St. John's doesn't end the water restrictions.
I will say, I remember many times as a child, water being over Michigan Avenue. This is not an unusual place for Lake Helen to be historically. It's been a long time. We've had, I think about a 40-year drought cycle. You know, nature does some long cycles. And 40 years ago, when I was a kid, I loved playing with the minnows. And I lived right up here by where the Surf of Hay is. We've got puddles that lasted for weeks. At the time, we'd have pretty good sized fish in those puddles. They were there for so long, when you got a good rainy season. It's, it's not an uncommon problem here in Lake Helen. It's just not.
The first complaint I was filed out of Lake Helen for was the land bridge and what we do with that vegetation for drinking water. It was one of the first things I came up with, talked to, looked at the line about. It changes quickly. What area are you complaining about?
Do you recall how long ago was after that visit, that they put the weirs in the drainage canal on the east side of town that drained that Flatwood section in there into Deep Creek? Because I know they cut a canal in there and then they came back in and put weirs in it.
I'm not sure of it.
Yeah, okay. It's out there.
Where?
It's east of here before, and it eventually dumps into Deep Creek.
Is that on Ohio or what, what road?
It's north of Ohio and east of.
Oh, it's just out, just out in property, not really a long road?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Where the hunt club is and stuff back in there.
Perhaps I could put out a meeting on the site and show me for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I, I mean, there was some engineers thought that it's a very good possibility that the water levels did not come back and the lake levels went down so low, because when they cut the canal in, there were no weirs put in it. So the water was draining through the surface of the aquifer. And, and then when it did start to rain, we had several years of higher than normal. It didn't seem to be doing any good because that whole area of land, that surface of the aquifer, had to fill up first, even after the weirs were put in place. But yeah, I could take you out and show you what it is.
Probably what I did.
Yeah.
So did they, talk a little bit about water quality, Horned Avenue and Luden Avenue. It's a good spot. We've had washout complaints at that intersection going into Lake Helen. This would target, put in the swell, put in the water quality and change in the connection point from. There's no real inflow of washouts to a point connection of the quality of the crap. Clean our water over at Lake Helen.
This would be a good time to do those as well, before those properties are built upon, which is probably not going to be too far in the future. And it's a whole lot easier to cut a soil in the yard when nobody's landscaping is being destroyed.
We have to make a requirement of their construction of those handles to put in all that system in there.
Well, that's good. That's a good point.
Well, other, of course, the water master plan of this report is set up to be state of the golden funds organized so that we can give those grants, where it might be Are you agree? It's a lot I just thought that you would invite, you could come back. I think that's it. Any other questions, statements?
From the time this initial cost study was gone to now, and then projecting five and 10 years down the road, do you have a multiplier that we can anticipate?
Whatever I say, double it.
Thank you.
We are not seeing costs come down anywhere.
Yeah.
I would think that the yearly inflation rate is right now, 6% to 7%. Even with small contractors, we're not feeling stable prices.
Yep.
Even with our. That's just in the standard right now. Things are going good for contractors right now. If you're a contractor, good to do.
Going back to what I was talking about at the beginning, also, some of the projects go through a mall, like the one for the culvert on. some of the projects, you know, go through a mall, like the one for the Culver on Church Street. That's a state-owned property. And they have crews that come out at least once a year to clean the embankment on the state property and around the discharge and the inflow of that culvert. Yet it's in our project. They have to do work on it, watch every week, or work on it when the state, the state property, the state's already maintaining.
Uh, the boy heads of a road failure, if you read that, like on this part, here, from Bradford. Um, Culver's four heated metal pipes rusted out. We replaced a field room at, uh, on Ohio some years ago. Uh, the entire top pipe was, um, leaking soil into the, the culvert. And that's a direct impact on the road.
Yeah, but the description in, in the plan calls for resloping the creek bed on the state property side and going to other mechanical changes in the natural part of the landscaping and everything. It doesn't address the culvert. And since it is state-owned property and state maintained thing, it would get us a better evaluation if we included the state part of that contributing to the repair replacement of that system. As part of, on part of the property.
I'm sure all that would be the head out, sort of aid for them. If it says, you know, I love it. Report. Who opens what land and who owns what culvert? Would you throw that out as a project?
Yeah, it'd be nice to know, um, the answer to that question ahead of time. Maybe our, maybe staff can, can do that. Uh, because I see this as motorite in view of what needs to be done. Exactly who does the work and who pays for it, like Roger was saying, depends on whose it is, whose right of way it is, whose road it is, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, if we know the answers to those questions, then we can do the administrative work that we need to contact the parties responsible and, and make them do it. But to not have it as part of our study, I think would be, make a mistake. We may not have to fund it other than phone calls and coordination, but.
The, uh, a lot of the ownership and we've dealt with it, except you go, go into a project. Engineer that you asked to repair that pole, would do it at a scope level four onto this board and then you'd apply either as an exclusion or an inclusion, um, for any of the other agencies. That's not necessarily something that would be done on an annual.
Gotcha, okay.
But certainly the engineer that you asked to that pole, that would be something that they should identify during the scope, conduct and stage, or make it sort of like.
Any additional questions? I do have a couple of blue cards from Harold Webb and Carol Webb. And if you would, sir, take your name and address for the, just for the record.
My name is Harold Webb and I'm just trying to put this to the road in the county. Uh, my comments have to do with the, in a late fall, it's a presentation. What I can tell most of what we're reading here is that they have spot. There's been no celebration made out there. Those city people. What's happened out there over the years? City can't really pay the candy work. There was no flooding there at Lake Pearl and the city could have paid surface. And what, what was it about ten years ago, maybe? Did a resurgence in the candy road? Some type of, uh, question. Contract reversed the crossroads of the road. Won't say not to about one hundred feet from the city that's existing and contains it. They know where that is on the west side of it, not in the first. But they burst the crossroad of the road. We've got it flowing to the east. There's a simple cure to this, let's call it two hundred forty thousand dollars. You have someone come in and do a resurgence job in that strip. Takes a frozen curve, throws the crossroad back to the west. That goes to the inlet that's there. That inlet will work very well as it is, including pipes. If the city will maintain it. Now that inlet is right at the top of the surface of the ground. It just comes over the leaves and falls, so they're tiny. The water has a curve. You don't pay taxes, you start on the water. Water goes back from that point through the kids. The crossroads, the slope that comes to the inlet comes. Now it'll come south, not here, from the north. That's who they work. Log it up, comes up, fills out all through the road. That's what all the erosion on the east side, when you can't see it, the bottom corner, the story should go that way. It's not gonna cost two hundred forty thousand dollars to fix that thing. Do a Cadillac and do something like that, but I would suggest, whatever we do, whatever is presented to you, don't just take it and say, okay, the deed he did, it didn't work. You need to have somebody in your staff, city people, whatever, review it and look at it and value each of yours. And one of them.
Okay, quickly, please.
Something about grading under the bat. That situation would fall at the city staff, if each wise, since the hurricane. If that comes to fog, then they're bad. Apparently it's done upon dead years, hoping to follow up on the east side of the land. And start from the wrong that you have, keep them on form, so they're going to your attention.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. We usually put the passage of runway, a roadway run on there like a road. Looks like I seen it up in the road.
It's, it's private property, so that's a difficult thing for cities to.
They miss out on the property? All of the trouble?
I'm not sure what the easement is there, but much of it is private property. I, I know, I don't know the exact line.
Well, if it's God, well, anyways, we all know.
It's a good suggestion. I understand where you're, where you're going with that.
We all know why it's off, but the way that it is, because bringing it to the last one, there's not much. And there's like, going back to there, it's something over. They control capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Oh, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Webb. I appreciate that.
Does that mic work?
Um, nothing's working right well yet. I know we're having difficulty hearing, but, uh. We're hopefully going to get the, uh, audio engineers in here and get this better. But I'm sorry, Mr. Webb, did you have something else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. Betty O. Okay. Speak up.
I'll speak up. Betty O wants to present the Kansas Road. Okay. First of all, there's some good things to talk about today. And there is, in that lake, a pump down, um, north of my house going around that lake has a big lake that the water used to flow through, come just up the street from me and go on there and go into the lake and then go out the back door. All right. Well, it doesn't do that anymore. But the people don't, we found that out in downtown, which around the east, for the whole city. And when it was low, we saw there is a culvert, some kind of, not culvert, a pipe that comes out of that lake, which obviously is blocked. All right, now where it comes across the road, it doesn't flow across the road anymore. It is coming under the road. And by the way, right next to the, that thing that it sits up, it's, it's sitting in the hole. Um, the lake comes right through there and it's going, all right. My back area, which, when they have our cur Canes, it's like, all right, right now. My back area stays well all the time. I'm totally lost back behind my one fence. I can't even go from the back of my property over across, which is still part of my property, in my, like, the way our property's divided. There is a wonderful piece of property over there that my neighbor mows, just to keep it down, and that I can't get used to my horses. That's because something is blocking. Now, I know that you used to be able to, uh, Mr. Penner used to take a canoe and go from the back of that property all the way across the path before it was built, right? You're talking about that culvert, I went to, all right. Before Ricky retired, he had somebody come out and check that to clean it up. And it's still obviously not cleaned up, maybe one side, but this side is not cleaned up. So that needs to be taken care of because I'm really tired of walking down the, in the back. I can't use it for my horses. They used to go across to the other side and, and graze, but they, they can't do that anymore because of the way their property is.
Yeah, um, Mayor, can we take these, uh, public comments as far as, uh, pipes, overflow weirs, et cetera, et cetera, have staff, um, put together a list of where they're at and then, uh, see if we can go out with the, with the city of the year and locate that and recognize whether or not the pipe is still good and can be cleaned out or is even worthy of cleaning out or does it need to be added to the problem? Because all of these lost pieces of information are incredibly important to the big picture. And so for, I, I think it should be clear to all of our citizens that if they, they know where there's something, we can go to the plan and say, okay, yes, those are identified, but the ones that are not, um, you know, let's locate that and let's make that part of the, the solution.
Did you hear my dad?
That's a good suggestion.
I'll get it said.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Olof. Don't walk too far, Mr. Cook. You're up.
Out. And anyhow, Kansas Road, Harvard. A gentleman over there. We had a problem solving. Because we never, all we did was go after that McKinsey Road, when we did that McKinsey Road, we never, kept our water problems. And what he was telling you as a solution is what the solution is. They did McKinsey Road, they come back. They didn't create enough to put it down, pay them. But we never had it down there. You know, before, never, so. You know, I don't want to blow his head up thinking that they did it. Anyhow, um, next problem. The, uh, problem that, that lady over there was, I think, that you. I went out to the garden, we looked at the problem. I put that burn back there, put the pipe in, did everything years ago when George Claude still had it. But anyhow, the problem on that thing, matter of fact, Betty was talking to me today about this stuff. And they went McKinsey Road quite a while ago, and she was hiding over the back and looked at the situation. Now today, she says they came and they only came out for one side, exactly.
That's true. We've been there before.
No, it's me, not the one side.
It's just the west side, the west side. They differently get out the east side, on the east side.
How should I add information to this question? Why the heck they made it every time? That's where the water's coming from. Because for years, I've, I've cleaned that, yeah, a couple times. To get the water flow. We never, and when I went to bed, we couldn't even walk around the back on the burn like that. Or anything. But that's a situation, I don't know, you should have been there to get the candy to take there, but I mean, we talked about that many months ago. Months, months ago.
You can't get filled like this.
I, no, I never did.
No, they didn't always have a supply.
They put it in, but they didn't, they neglected to put it on the permanent map.
She's been looking for answers before a storm. It's not a storm, in the last two years, she has lost a lot of her pasture.
Now you could walk, when I went to bed, on the learn I built and the pipe I put in there, you could walk from there right over to her back road for years. I mean, it was a wet spot, but, you know, but you could go through there. But I think the big thing is, so now we have, um, you know, gotta get the candy somehow and get in there and did that thing. And then once we clean that out, then we can judge what's going on and watch our water situation. Got that, Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to compile all this information so we can, you know, go in, take a look at it and, and, and take. There are two things need to be done. This is just starting to address all of our problems. Once, once we go forward, the two things need to be done is the project needs to be done and the maintenance of the project. That's my first question was, is there dollars put in here for maintenance? If there isn't, then we can address that as staff go down the road. Because you know as well as I do, um, if we don't talk to the state, show them the problem, show them it's on their property, we don't talk to the county, show them the spot, show them the problem and have, and hold your feet to the fire, they're not gonna just do it. So we have to have, uh, procedures and protocol here that every single year or every other year, however often we feel like it needs to be done, whoever's sitting in that desk over there knows that, okay, as part of your stormwater, um, maintenance every single year, this is what needs to be done. If it's our work, we'll do it. If it's a phone call, we just need to make it.
Yeah, but we have to do that regular inspection. That has to be part of our job, even though it's technically isn't. It is because the reality is, this is where the water meets the road here. We're, we're the guardians.
Yep.
But the difference is, Betty, I was just, the county didn't know that. Well, way back, the county knew that. The guy who took them to clean it out, I think he did. Just didn't say that. I just went over there and hit the back door and looked it up. Because of all the tests, all the way over to the.
You, you did that work for them and they got lazy somehow.
No, it's in the morning, back years.
Well, and you know what happens. You've been in the business long enough, or you understand that when we go through drought periods, we forget about floods. When we go through flood periods, we forget about droughts. So it's a, it's a balance we're trying to establish here. Right now, we're trying to get rid of the water. Okay, there's gonna be a day when we're gonna want it back. And it's not like we can just hold it off someplace. But that's the whole concept behind overflow weirs, et cetera, et cetera. Hold as much as you can to get rid of what you have to and a maintenance plan goes with it. So I'm just glad that we're not only talking about what we need to do, but we're also talking about funding mechanisms for it.
But I think that if you got someone from the county and store over to.
Yeah.
With that, and then, so we need three projects, bring them over here and talk about three projects.
I did call them just information sake. I did call them about a similar culvert that runs out of my little lake over for that, um, just south of Lake Pearl. Um, and they, they did send the man out and he had the maps with him and he said, just didn't know the maps anywhere. I said, I don't care. I'll put it in when you put the bat in. And it needs to be maintained. They had maintained around the driveway, uh, pipes that were allowing people to have dry driveways, but they didn't maintain that one foot lower where the water came out of that culvert. And it was completely covered. He said, oh, yeah, it's there. He said, I'll put it on the map. Now, whether he actually did or not, I don't know, but he was very nice about it. I know the county's busy too. They've got a lot of water piled up in a lot of places. Um, now it's not necessarily the right time to get rapid response, but hopefully if we can get on the maps by doing this, making these calls.
I'll understand one word, grade.
Grade, okay.
Grade is what can. That's what makes.
It's hard to make water flow uphill, isn't it?
At least, at least it took gravity to.
Yep, next year. Put that on the next workshop.
I, I just, we talked about, I just saw my neighbor there. Well, when our lake filled up and it flowed out like it was supposed to, it was fine. When we had all this answer ready where my thing is not going out, I am losing an edge. I can see, you can see on my property where it uses, the lake uses stop and where it is now. So they, it just didn't, we didn't just keep going, yet the water's fine. And I understand to say that it's not dry one time, okay, but I'll give it dry. As long as I don't, you know, I get into the little problem there. But that's right now, it's just your technical left and right, but I'll, I'll just put all that in.
Yep.
I'll be sure to see if they're getting those guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alaf. Well, any further discussion on the stormwater master plan?
I have just one, one quick question for Derek and Alon about possible vegetation control. I don't see that listed or Orange Avenue and Lemon Avenue, although that is a water quality, um, project or improvement project. And, um, and I was talking with Professor, um, Quiles from Spexton University about the data control and how it helps with filtration. So I was curious as to if that happened, if that's something that's a lot of us.
Are you talking about vegetation in the lake or vegetation in the woods?
In this lake.
There, there's, uh, few ways you could not trial protection facilities, including the bottom as well. Um, you put in a media, it's a little media that is designed to be extracted, extricated from the water. Um, and you can either sod that or you can pipe it. And plants make it look pretty, uh, they're not generally aquatic, um, except the pipe, which is what drew it to the lake. But there, there is bio protection in global nature codes that you can either Thomas well or the practice well, it's, 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 it's.
Okay, so that is a possibility here, um, in this proposal plan, okay?
Typically, when the plants are roadside swell, because it would interfere with maintenance, you already have a problem. It's a lot easier to go than it is to, um, treat the trees.
And that area, long, that area, long lemon there is pretty dry, even though it's just right there at the lake, it's still, that's a very sandy, dry soil there. I don't think it would support aquatic type plants.
The new, the new studies done by University of Florida and Miami and other places have found that use of bioswells, which are plant-related swells, reduces the maintenance because you no longer have to maintain them because the wildflowers and the water plants that drink up, the plants that drink up all the water, maintain it. It's all self-controlled. Then there's a flow down to where after filters through everything, it goes into the pipe that discharges into a body of water.
Yeah, it really depends on what the end product is, you want. We think that if, uh, the type of trees drink up a lot of water, I would say, do we might, that's right. Type of trees are nice to get growing, I think visually, why they grow a lot of times. Um, but yeah, I mean, if that's a goal, we just have these swells, I have to, we can look at that, but it also does want to introduce, um, traffic obstacles to a full-on period and access to a road, so we would consider, um, tree, trees. I like trees better than I like plants, because they are less competitive plants. Or the wildflowers are, are even they grown this fastest? So we can, you know, that.
The, uh, the bioactive media, you mentioned you, you put that down and then you could sod over that or put whatever other kind of plants. How deep is that media typically in those soils?
It depends on the ground, the media, and then you select. Florida, all of this, being a, being a software that needs to build up by University of Central Florida, um, they put out a software update every year, you can have five or six different media, and they range from flowing, flowing. Depending on what your target is for removal of nutrients, it's, um, which is more important for development versus new installation of soils. Because they are trying to reduce the nutrients from the water off the thing. Avery, just, how much light do you want to add?
Well, I think just pure speculation, but the homes that are being built there on the north side of, are potentially going to be built on the north side of Lemon, are going to be fairly substantial homes, which often come with fairly substantial landscaping, which often comes with fairly substantial nitrogen-type fertilizers. We would probably want to make this, right now, it's just woods and they're sucking everything up as much as it can possibly. So when they, when those things change, these are gonna be bigger than we think they have to be and maybe the meat needs to be deeper than we would first think. So we don't want to short, we don't want to shortchange that effort because that does go straight into the lake.
Yeah.
And it's a pretty, it's a full block, almost a full block long, um, in one direction and almost two blocks long in another downhill to that intersection. So a lot of water comes through there.
I have one more question. The, in this plan, I didn't, maybe I, I thought I overlooked it because I was looking for specific terminology, but was, was there consideration for acquisition of low-lying areas in order to help with flood mitigation?
There was a.
Yeah.
Is that something we'll consider later?
Yeah.
Or it's not needed?
Yeah, the acquisition of land, um, it would be a project specific. I don't know why they didn't include it. Maybe they weren't impressed that the city wasn't even market for it. But to make overall improvements and to have a stormwater system, you would need to purchase plank. Uh, and then do the improvements that go with those. So it's not just vital in, in local areas, it's creating a stormwater, um, facility upon with driver's engine swell, whatever fits the goal, um, that goes both ways. So that, when that position in the modern place is another part of your capital improvement. Just as I'm prethinking and writing our questions, the, not sure that I'm answering the question either, but the, where the city can provide property to universal improvements for the city lake zone is probably a step up. Um, and that would be driven by, um, that might be a workshop where we ask the residents and the commissioners for their local knowledge of where is that flood? And is that property for sale? Is it for sale for a fair and equitable price? Which is the other problem, what happened with purchasing a plan right now?
Well, I believe that Lucia Cowan has, um, some ideas. I think that they did hydrological studies and I believe that they have some ideas in terms of that. So maybe that's something we might want to look into a little more or like you were saying, have, have a workshop for that, because I know there's state funding available as well for those types of projects.
And if the land acquisition can be added as part of the water quality aspect of it because you're allowing the water to accumulate in a retention pond prior to going into another body of water or into another flow system, that flow system. So it can, and a lot of these projects that are listed in here are going to need the requirement of right of ways and, um, land for those retention ponds.
I know that we did, um, West Ohio, we were retention into the right of way. We couldn't go outside of it, um, and we could, had D E P, had drawn on that, because we can't go outside of D there. Land acquisitions. Is the property ever willing to sell it? What's number one? Um, do you want to look at that domain and the cost associated with that to acquire those types of things? Um, there's all kinds of decisions that could be made for what happened. Different ways to go about it.
So I guess then that leads to the question of if there is a land acquisition that changed the plan in any, in any way?
No. Um, it might be changed, independent project because it isn't enough. But this is assumed that, that it's already done. Or what if we?
Thanks.
I'm, I'm just making an assumption, but I'm assuming that when they did this plan to begin with, a city that doesn't have a stormwater system to begin with, uh, probably doesn't have the funding to, to build the stormwater system and do land acquisitions? My guess is that's probably why they omitted it. And then to, to your point, those land acquisitions, they've got to be in the right place. You just can't go buy a vacant piece of property over here that's a good value because if it's not in the right place.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's a dance and it is easier to say, okay, let's, here's the project. Now, boy, it'd be nice if we had that piece and then start that conversation. But to do that type of stuff ahead of time, uh, all you could really do is throw it out at the board and say, okay, here's a number for land acquisition for future projects, maybe, kind of.
I certainly would think, again, just to sort of have something to bounce around between your ears, like you were saying earlier, as we look forward into some of these other projects and start getting to specific projects, if some of these would be greatly benefited by, uh, you know, an acre of land that we could put some retention on, bring it to our attention and, and we'll see if we can't, we can't make something happen because you never know until we ask the question. If we're both asking in both directions, certainly helpful. We don't, we wouldn't know to think, to know how much that might help any given project.
For us, if you're doing a flood mitigation project, you would want a piece of property to be next to the canal.
Sure.
That you would get as much back to your box for the exhumation of the next.
Case in point, there's the, uh, the property on the corner of, uh, Pleasant and Michigan. It would be the southeast corner, um, and it's stayed wet quite often. So, you know, if, if it was acquired, it would be a great place to be able to collect water before it went into the lake. If, you know, you get your hands on it, I, who knows? I don't know who owns it, but, you know, would they be willing to carve off a piece of it? Okay, what's it gonna look like in the end?
That is a good thing to look at. Thank you. Any further questions for the engineer? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Um, I presume that we will be looking at this at the next, um, full commission meeting and, uh, just as a matter of consensus, does anybody, I, I know, Mr. Eric, you voiced some, some significant concerns about it and, and, but do we want to look for, do we want to put this on the next agenda for, for consideration?
I think there's a, the first project on the list definitely needs to be put on it to get that started and in the process, the project on High Street, we gotta handle that thing because that's an immediate effect right now. But I think we also need to have citizens' input on getting other projects that are around town that are locally related to their specific areas that are not addressed in this thing. Like I, I, one of my pointed out, it's an existing system that needs to be improved and expanded. It's a part with, uh, Cassidy Road, West Ohio, Lakeview and East Ohio. That whole area, you get an inch, an hour of rainstorm, that whole area in there floods. And that's got a storm drain system that's clogged up and this county cleans it out, but it's still clogged up because the type of system it is, it is clogged up from all the vegetation and natural decay that has infiltrated the drainage area of that type of system.
All right, well, thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Engineer. We appreciate it, Derek. Um, I know it's been a long time in the making. Uh, appreciate all the work you put into it. Had many conversations with you, not too many directly related to this, but you've always been very helpful and very knowledgeable and I really, really do appreciate it. So next on our agenda, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. City Administrator, if you'll introduce.
Mr. Penner, remember you mentioned, uh, the next speaker is Mike Burton with Perman and Tellus and Associates. We've heard about the $4.3 billion of the projects in short term and long term. And the fact that this particular study was written in the format of the State Revolving Fund application, which is in Portland, they're not rewriting. But now, to be able to fund the projects, you need to have a source of funding and that's what Mike brings in. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Mike and he can study, he can, he can, but, uh, he can discuss the assessments, the process and how to play with the problems necessary for the project for projects.
Next ladies, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. Uh, as it exists, my name is Mike Burton, I'm the Executive Vice President of Perman and Tellus. And, uh, I'm here to present to you our proposal to do a stormwater rate study. Before I get into this, I just want to talk to you a little bit about what a rate study is. Um, a theoretical charter, I guess, is in front of you guys. You get the same thing from there?
Yes.
Uh, it's a plan of sustainability analysis. There's really two parts to any utility rates and a stormwater assessment of rates. There's the part that's a, a lot of people are called as a revenue efficiency analysis. What you need to have sufficient revenues over the forecast period, in this case, is tenure, being able to meet all your, your operations and maintenance costs and all the capital costs as we just discussed. Um, it sounds like it may be a challenge to nail all that down, but, um, and the associated maintenance related to those capital projects. If you do a capital project, you may have to add additional maintenance because you have a capital project. Did all of us go into the revenue requirement of this assessment year by year? And we look at funding your capital project either with cash and it's available or with debt? Or through grants? And you may have some, some projects that we believe are going to be next for, managed projects that you really get, uh, state volume fund loan funded for, and some of them may have forgiven associated with that. So all of that would be combined into what we're doing, what you're looking for, projecting the revenue requirements that you have and what the revenues would be at your current rates, okay? Or that has a rate of inflationary increase, which is what we probably start out with as a baseline. The second part of a rate study, which is not in actual, because I don't think you really need it, uh, and it's usually, it has to be in the scope where it's an initial stormwater assessment, is how are you going to recover that money from properties that you have in debt or in front of you? Have you already done that at some point in the past and determined, uh, how to allocate these costs out to the property, the residential properties and the non-residential properties, basically on the purpose surface on the properties? The residential are equal per property, as I understand it, and the commercial, non-residential properties are basically the average square area of purpose on a residential property. So that's a pretty standard way to do it. Um, we'll look at that a little bit more when we do this analysis to see if we look at what you need to do any adjustments to that. At this point, I would say, no, that's a, that's a pretty standard, common way to allocate the cost to recover some of the properties and benefit from this stormwater. So, um, I'm going to go through a presentation that talks a little bit about how this all works, uh, and where our proceeds would be. And then, it's not in what was sent to you, the residents who sent you in advance, but it's in this one. I'm going to go through kind of simulation of how the model works and how it all adds together with relative capital projects, potential debt financing, the cash flow that you have, whether it's positive or negative, and the reserve balances and what level of rate increases you would need. Now, this is not you that I want to show, it's just a sample. This is the kind of thing that when this. This is the kind of thing that when this is done, I'll bring before you a lot of models, see if you just like what it is today. And we'll go through it and if you couldn't make, you can make adjustments to any, any input that's in there. Whether it be, whether it be growth, whether it be interest rates, whether it be the rate that you put in place, whether it be the capital projects. Um, and one other thing about the capital projects, uh, we, I heard a lot of talk about who's it paid for, the county or us or whatever. We can put a capital project in C I P and we can designate the option of forcing you with the city's responsibility. And that's all that would go into our plan. So that's easily handled. And there was another question about, uh, is this a current net cost or is it a future cost? Um, in our model, we, we assume that the C I P, they'll put it in our model, that's capital group, it's current dollars. And then we escalate it into future year dollars before it goes into our funding algorithm. Uh, and we just, we run counsel with the engineer about what, what sort of an escalation factor we should use on this project. So that's how we do that every time. So that is, is there any questions just generally before I go into this to go through?
Not yet.
Very nice. Go for it.
Not yet.
Okay, um, I've introduced myself to you. Um, I have over 35 years of experience. Been a lot of these kind of studies. I've probably done 30 or 40 assessment studies, whether they be fires, stormwater, saltways. Uh, we've written some, uh, and probably done over 100 rate studies that are similar to assessments. It's just a service fee as opposed to assessment. So I have a lot of experience with this. And by the way, I also work with Chris Rutherford and he's a special counsel in terms of assessments. And so, um, I had a discussion with him before I got here. So he and I worked together on many of these assessment projects. So you have a pretty good team here, I think, to deal with what you need to do. Uh, working with Terry Bogory, uh, that's how you say his name. He smells it funny. I'm not sure. I guess he's got some credit here and he's, uh, he's got a lot of technical experience with many, many, uh, and a few of the rate studies also. And then, uh, Brandon Vader is a P E and he should be providing some technical assistance. During evaluating the capital program that comes in, do we need to assist? What kind of maintenance is going to be? It is a resolving together, kind of as a independent third look, a capital program and a decision management. But that will be an input from you, but we do have the resources to kind of help you have a sort of. Um, a stormwater assessment program is a program where it generates sufficient revenues each year and you put extra sustain. Um, because you don't want to have to supplement with some fun, you want it to be self-sustained. Now, right today, we have a great deal of uncertainty in the rest of the world, which we're experiencing, uh, record inflation, supply chain disorder, low funding limitations. You've got a lot of play, you've got a lot of needs, so there's a lot of things stacked up on the inside of the coin. In this presentation, we'll discuss an interactive modeling process that will allow you to model, allow us to do the model where your status quo, which is what your current revenues are, assuming some certain inflationary index on the roof you have, that will make you plain. And what your current costs are, uh, insulated forward, but with the addition of, of what you had in your plan in terms of your capital revenue and your own entities moving forward. So it would be, the revenues will be, uh, pretty static, but the expenses will be increased based on what you need or it will show whether you have efficiency in your revenues or not and what level of rate adjustment in terms of overall revenue you need. When I say a rate adjustment, that means you take a consistent rate for P R U's and if you did like a 15% increase in that, we would apply that 15% to that E R U's and then it would go into the assessment roll and have the, of like these properties accordingly. Same way you can do it in the past. Um, well, by having an alternative assumption regarding key drivers like the cost escalation factors, growth, assessment basing would put in place. Any other fees that you might recover through this assessment program like a concession fee or anything like that, I don't know. Um, we show how we can evaluate the risk and the consequences of the things you would be looking for in the future. And how to develop strategies, admitting that you're going to invest in a long-term foundation system. One of us talked to you about, for the hearing in the next two slides is planning for financial sustainability and then modeling financial sustainability. I might go over, I could go and feed the proposal for you, then you have to go over that demonstration of the modeling process. Especially assessment program, much more like a self-driving business. Scaling operations, leading investment in service delivery, part of all planning, future needs. Already mentioned a pretty extensive, uh, master plan that's going to be helpful as an interaction. Financial sustainability, forecasting, basically over your annual budget process. It's kind of like with the, or not with the, on your budget process and saying, what's going to happen? What are the consequences going to be in the future years of the decisions we have now and in the future? An objective is to have a local service that you can really expect, managing cost impacts and the community members. Developing financial plans, you have cost increases, which is primarily due to our staffing needs eventually. Inflationary cost increases and capital project costs, including the initial maintenance and maintenance associated with new capital and maintenance needs maybe need to add in the half way or more. Revenues, based on assessments, you need to estimate your revenues if you have it. Any subsidy that you may plan to do from internal funds and help things you remove. But as Lee said, if there's another source of funding you could be using outside of the assessment, you may have to clean it up. I think, I think the other one that was in the back, American Rescue Program, American Rescue's revenue. So whether you want to keep, you can use it for something else. Financial policies that have got this bouncing process, in those financial policies would be, uh, the return level that covers the holes in the debt. And I think you're trying to, um, state the volume debt, even, uh, go really nightly, say, national or revenue volume debt. If you figure a few months, we can assess the revenues and we can help you develop. Okay, the modeling that we're going to do, and use the right approach to do, we can make this interactive, valuable process for you folks, decision makers. Truly understand the different alternatives you have in front of you with the consequences. If we transfer it to state government, it will be right here for everybody and daughters to see what's going on. Um, with a full picture of this assessment program, your financial support over a key year forecast period. And that would be including changes in terms of staffing, capital project, recording deposits, maintenance offices, number four. And we'll have a modeling required, so just to help you sample the project, cap, capital proofing program. Uh, what kind of borrowing would be, when it would be, how much it would be, what the debt service could be on that, from the fact that there are cash flows. Um, and then again, the way we're adjusting, so we're going to be, we're going to be sustainable over the, over the long term. And they will help you get it and avoid a substantial acceptance in the future plan because it is such a true, good process. It's not just a cheap financial scheme. You'll see it in the, in the scrap, all that's output, it's easy to understand. Uh, and, and to, to bring a little cleave, you know, in the floor. When you look at the total picture of what happens in any kind of flood, like this, or a flood, or a stormwater assessment, you have certain drivers that come in, have to do that. You have level of service, you have growth and demand, you have problems where you don't have property values. You're doing this on an assessment based on property values. You have economic condition, asset condition, regular mortgage lines and many others. Lots of resources that you need to use to meet those, uh, those needs of the drivers who provide you the new way. You have all these, there's credit markets consultants, other credit markets we put this, uh, funding, you know, the fact that. Lots of things that you have to accomplish our operations and maintenance. You have to generate revenues and you have to fund your little replacement, including assets that you have. And, uh, expensive construction, but there's things that you need which you don't already have that we've heard a lot about in the prior presentation. And then actually you may have initiatives that, that Derek Barford runs at this level in your stormwater system. I think that's the case, but sometimes you might look at organizational, say, assessment, asset management, venture companies, plans. TJ, uh, planning our performance managers and succession development that probably any of that would affect us very much here. But to the extent that it is, it would be one of the things we consider. Now, of those, something you can do in this financial sustainability model, you see that black circle a little there. And all of the, the driving resources are funded to the initiatives of capture. The positive cash flow and the negative cash flow, the debris and revenues according to that model, there are costs to us to go within that model. Then the output of the model, financial plan, which is really the roadmap for putting that in the future for your organization. Just to go through our proposal with you a little bit, um, we have several work elements in the proposal. Uh, the first is product initiation, which is kickoff, a holiday day request and gathering data, getting familiar with the data. Uh, the second task is revenue forecast and sufficient analysis, where we develop, develop that what I saw in that multi-annual financial forecast. And really it's a financial basket for the stormwater utility. It herself, a hundred is a quick go to that, uh, which is revenue sufficient analysis, which includes capital group program. Uh, any, and your debt service, that you have existing debt and any area about future debt. Um, borrowing program and debt service for that, sources and uses of funds from where do they all come, including grants. Uh, and the funds analysis of your, kind of your fund balance, getting found, having to go to the convention here. Um, we did put together a graphic file report and the general results to you. And total of the project is about 25,000 units of debt. Schedule that we put on company, there's about a 90-minute period to get this done. And that, and you can see that the task there and how it works out. Um, and we'll have several, for the middle of the process. Um, and when I was telling Chris about communicating, I mean, that the property manager in Bush County required that any adjustments to the assessment be on the terminals. So we have, that's our target date, we have to work for. And even if we have some delays in this project, I think we're in good shape. We're being that, uh, basically with a 98% check-in on time. That would be what we're here now, very, in February, March, April, May. So we got, uh, a little bit of time to take another month, but we really need to keep going and get it done. So we, we don't want to miss any of that legal curve that we have to go over to get this simple.
And we learn that even if you're within them, sometimes it doesn't, it's not soon enough.
Well, you can be within the statutory remembrance of the state, but maybe not property.
Maybe not outside the comfort zone of somebody on staff.
The state says you have to do this on September 30th and you have to have a 30-day notice. The first time's a bell, there's 30-day charter, the hearing where you got there. Uh, but some counties, the property regulators says, we want that notice to go in, not just the first one. That would be Bush County, that's that. So move along. Okay, um, I'm going to go through again a similar demonstration of the model as it was here before us today. Uh, and, uh, first thing I want to talk about is the symptoms that are going into the sample you're standing here. And this is ever where, where shooting growth is at about, it starts at about 59%. And this was a community that were in that way to grow, to taper off in the out years. Uh, so you can see it goes down to about 3% to 5% in the out years. So we have a decline in growth of curve here. We're going to get whatever your growth will be. And I don't know how built out Lake Helen, you know, small community, they don't have a lot of growth, but we would refuse to defer. Rate increases at work, so if you start this off, our inflationary level increases 3% in a year for the longer we're looking at. Um, you know, an escalation rate for operations maintenance costs, uh, would be about 3.5% a year. Again, we would counsel the engineer, uh, about what we have for the operations maintenance assessment should be. Um, fund balance target in, in the sample, I'm going to show you, it starts at 45% of operations maintenance expenses. But in this example, we increased it up to 50% at the end of the period. Because in a small system, a percentage of loan debt is not necessarily a very big number. And so really keeping a higher percentage, if this was ours county, I mean, we might would say at 25% because they have.
A number.
Or Bush County, because they have a lot, a lot, a high growth of loan interest, so it would be a bigger number. So that's what's going into this model that I'm going to show you in a couple of minutes. First, this is a status quo that I want to talk to you about. The status quo includes the capital group program, increases in opening expenses at the current rates adjusted by 3%. So that's what this is. What you're seeing is there are two graphs and these are kind of the key answer graphs in the analysis. On the left, you see cash flow and if you're looking at the red, and I can't tell if that blue line, the red line is the total cash out, is owning that service and cash from the capital. And the green line is total cash. And so, it, that's directly related to the, uh, to the capital group program. Where you can see if you have a negative or positive cash flow, the negative cash flows that are happening early are, are causing the fund balance to decrease. The positive cash flow that are happening in the out years are causing the, uh, fund balance to increase. This is a lot like us all, we're actually not personally, you can spend more than you make. If you want to, but you need to have savings, you know, there's a guy filled with somewhere. But the more you spend, more than you bring in, the more you need to save, you know, to be preserved. And if you, if you make more than you spend in the out years, there, you see this where this, this building up, sure, it comes out. That's really important. And this is kind of where we can go, uh, to kind of give the anticipation. There's a lot of schedules that are under this, you know, even if I have, even if it's a lot, but I have to look at this. You've got the entry schedule, the eyes, one glance over two, uh, so we're trying to make this simple for the decision maker. Next thing, and, and fund balance is where the road meets the road. The black, the black line out there is that minimum balance target. And so you can see that in this case, this is a pretty sustainable system right now because the fund balances at or above the minimum target throughout the period. If we go below that minimum target, then we would need to adjust, either reduce the cost a little bit or just the rates up to be sure that you made it in the top of the top. When you look at this graph, this is the funding sources that are happening. And, um, if you look in, uh, 23 and 24, you see it's a big blue area, that's branch. And this is the, we have a lot of units that were coming in. And so, um, when you take it, add it to your grants, you don't have to fund it out of your own pocket and it makes a huge difference. So we'll look at that when you sit here. Um, and then the green bar there at the bottom are our cash under capital. And that's why we have a, uh, it starts in that first year and that's why we have a little bit of negative cash flow first year. And that's why over at 2025, we can put the fund balance starts declining a little bit for a few years until the program is kept back. Now, here we have the capital group program. And in this case, we have a significantly improved group program. As you can see at 23 and 24, but a lot of that, those dollars were funded by those grants you see up there on the blue line. So we were able to do this without any borrowing, in this case. And we have an X R F loan for about 800,000 looking at it after the forgiveness that the X R F was going to give a little up. So, uh, what we have here is the total picture of this and with, with the plan in place, this, this report, you know, would be fine. But it's huge for this assessment. I don't think you're going to be looking at this very honestly because you have a lot of capital that's coming in. You have a relatively low rate, you have a lot that needs to be met. And one of the things that we may need to do, given the state of where you are with capital group program, if you look at that C I P graph, a lot of them, um, we could actually go and say, what level of capital do we want to try to fund each year? Even though we don't have a specific project in there at all right now, I mean, we put that in. So then you would go, okay, we're going to fund X million dollars of capital in the first three, four years. And then maybe different levels in the out years. Uh, and we could go see what that would do and what we often found too, with some of our clients, um, where they, they have a capital program, they act like a monthly capital program. This is having more and more interiority, where the engineers, eyes are areas of their stomach, if they come to this massive capital program. And when we run the analysis, they have, they have 30, 40, 50, increases to two. And so then they go, well, what level of capital could we fund? And that's when we go back and say, in the program, maybe here, here's the level of capital that you can fund. Within the revenue intention that is selected for completely, or what would be useful in your position. So we can work with that. Now, I'm going to show you another, the same thing where we're going to bring in a potential capital project that was not in the initial analysis.
Well, as far as I've, my thoughts have been going on this. One of the hardest things as a commission is to, is our annual budget. That's one of our biggest jobs, most important jobs, and rarely ever do we look beyond the year we're in, really. I mean, we're supposed to, but it's difficult. There's a lot of pressure on us every year to get to this or that or the other. Rarely do we, and I've never seen a commission really think of anything on a 10-year time plan, and we need to. These types of things, especially these larger funds, they need to build up a, kind of a serum level in the bloodstream of the city, and so it can maintain its stability. We need to have this type of thinking, and I think this $25,000 injection of capital, that's a lot of money, but to inject that higher level of long-term planning and at a very professional level to give us, to give us guidance, I think it's well worth the money. This kind of came, caught me off, not off-guard, but this all comes from the city administrator. I really, we never talked about it at all, and to me, though, you all remember in the stormwater issues that we had coming up through our last county assessments, we all wanted to fund it better, and then it kind of blew up in our face a little bit, and part of that, a big part of that, I was pushing for 100 and something percent increase, and everybody was afraid of that, rightfully so, saw where it ended up. And, but if we can have solid numbers to look at, where we're, none of us are, we'd have confidence that those numbers have real meaning and real value to the community. It's not a shot in the dark, even though I was, I was not uncomfortable with what I was recommending, I couldn't support it like this can. And I think this gives us real solidity, real foundation to work forward. I would like to do this very much, and I mean, I know this is a workshop, but that's just my two cents work. I would love to do this, and I would love to anticipate that every year, as we go into our, this time of year, getting ready for tax area and the budget, that follows right on the heels of one another, that we get this injection of long-term, high-level analysis. I think that would be very beneficial to the commission. And I, that's, so that's my two cents work. I appreciate, I appreciate your knowledge and the presentation here. Thank you.
As long as we don't stick it on the shelf like we've done other long-term reports.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Let me give you that one third question. It looks out in here, but really it's really good planning here. Ten years is a forecast period, or a decade here. Your forecast of planning period is really bad right now. The first stock data is that 10 years. We can be more sure of what's going to happen. As long as we inject enough of that surety, but so we can actually do, I'm talking about risk assessment, we can actually kind of do and say, okay, this is what we think is going to happen, this is where we think the equation is, what if it didn't work? What if you have a recession? What if, you know, whatever, whatever you want to look at, to look forward and say, what will I do to this? So it does help me kind of assess your risk, what other things I would think you could place. You may have a ready plan that's real skinny, just keeps you right at the level of, of blood balance, and then we might say, well, what if the place you guys, what if growth goes low? Then we can do that, like we see if there are 10 people over your reserve fund or setup, what would we need to do during our assessment of that?
We have been real skinny here in Lake Island for a long time, particularly on stormwater, and, but on other things as well. I think I've mentioned before, there's a community on Beachside that's not much bigger than us, that has a $20 million reserve fund, and that gives them comfort in doing these larger projects, and then things can happen quickly and efficiently, and we're not going to develop anything like that overnight, certainly, but one thing we're sure of, it's going to keep raining. It, we're going to keep building properties in Lake Island and creating more impervious surface. All of these things are inevitable, absolutely inevitable. So, this is what we have to do.
If we do purchase this tool, and that's how I see it, this tool, and I'm probably in favor of doing so, it will be interesting to see how close our dark throwing gets to your reality. It's really going to be interesting to see.
Yeah, yeah. It is a tool, it's a very powerful tool, but it's also a process. It's a facilitation of process that really brings us along. Somebody to walk you through, answer your questions, run the analysis, see what the equation is, what the intention is, whatever. And at some point in the future, when men want to do it yourself, and they want to have the model to do it yourself, but in this, in this first study, I think you really need that facilitation of the process. And you'll be amazed how this, I mean, there are real data in there, and real models showing up there, how much more interest in there. Should we be good in this?
How closely would you be working with our financial staff, I'm blanking on his name?
Zack.
Zack. James Moore. James Moore is the company, yes. How closely would you be working with them and educating them on the process so they can support this year-round?
And we're not saying want to be involved, we need to get the data, you have the data, so we're going to have a data request, and whether it's your, I don't know, your pretty small city, I don't know, you have several commissioners, like the director, perhaps all together. Now, we have, we have contracts, CPA, other, but we would be more close to them, get the data, if you understand it right, and then also the data understanding process.
Thank you. Any additional questions? I do have one blue card, Nancy Weary. Thank you, sir, very much for being here, and don't go too far away, we may...
Sir, Mike?
I said, don't, don't run too far away for a couple of minutes, but, but thank you very much.
Just so that you know that this is our, what she has right now here, so if you guys want to get it, look at it, run through yourself.
Thank you. Ms. Weary?
Hi, I'm Nancy Weary, I'm from Lake Island. I have actually, I have a few questions. The, you can just ask about James Moore, is that an addition, additional cost to your principal? Would that be an additional cost to your principal?
Is, thanks for the counter.
If we were...
That's our CPA, financial assistant.
We would expect to work with either your staff, if you have it in-house, or your accountant, to get the data, present the data, and be sure that we, we, the proponent there, and we give them back what we call the assumptions that resulted from it, for them to say, okay, did you understand what you told us, correct?
Is that...
That's part of the money.
Okay. That was, that was one of the things I wanted to ask. Who applies for the grants, the state or other company?
Maybe I better stand that for next year. We don't do that, that's not, I mean, there may be people in our firm that do, that's not part of the proposal, you know, we apply for grants, there's others who do that. We, if the staff applies for the grants, we already apply for two, three, or four distribution. If we're talking about your small bar, but if the city actually applies.
The city, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, next question. So, I live the HOA, the only current place in our city that has stormwater, and we pay HOA dues annually, and our dues cover our stormwater. How would this assessment affect all of us that live here? Would we be able to charge additional money because we're already paying for stormwater?
I'd be happy to answer that one. The same way that we get charged for, by the school board, for each student, if we want an educated society, we pay that whether we have children or not. In this particular arena, if we want water quality in the lake, if we want parks that aren't flooded, if we want all of those drainage things that we all also enjoy as a city, then we'd all be, you know, paying a spike.
So, we're going to be, people that live in the woods, we're all going to be paying twice for our stormwater, which we already have and maintain. I just want to clarify that.
What I'm saying is, you'll always pay a piece of the price. It may change from properties that don't have, are not part of an HOA, just like with the power company, even if you put solar on your roof, we're still going to pay money every single year to maintain the grid. So, just look at it as an investment. Does, will it, will it be the exact same amount as somebody who is not in an HOA pay? Probably not, would be my guess.
And that's kind of what I want to know. We don't have amenities, because we all know we don't have amenities, but we do pay full chunk change, and we do have stormwater, and we maintain it, and they maintain that it's not our HOA, and so, I don't know if that's something that...
We've talked to, I've talked to city attorney in Crystal Road, Mike has mentioned a couple times, and in situations like this, they would probably, I don't want to say exactly, but probably pay basically the same as everybody else, but we would deduct from the assessments in the city what they already paid in HOA, because that's part of the system itself.
I see.
So, they'll end up paying the same, but they'll basically be probably, at least that's what...
I don't really understand that better.
They won't pay any more than anybody else in the city that can...
I want to be able to pay more than anybody else.
No, you'd be paying, because you get the rules. There's a couple, if this is one way I guess you could, if the, I'm going to use one of those, if I can do math in my head. If the city's stormwater assessment was $100 a year, and you paid 40 a year, and you would only have to pay six.
Thank you.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, thank you.
I think that, I'll have to get back to Chris about that. I think that has to do with whether it's a duplication of service or some extension of service, because sometimes you're getting the service that the city provides, and then you choose to have a high-level service, like something on site, and if that's the case, you wouldn't necessarily do that in my mind.
So, we look forward to, I know all of them, they're looking forward to finding out how that's going to play out for us. The other things I wanted to ask, but we were talking about Jason Heaven, I believe, I mean, was, it's terminal, where did you show this? We should, that's, so, we want to install, and we need, make a, planting, and the newest production, and they've, you know, over stall, we need seeing type deal with your grants there, and this, our beach, so we want to talk to them.
Sure. Do you want to go through about the, until it...
I would most certainly make sure, Nancy, that you have a representative with the HOA in communication.
I need to get their board contact information, so, thank you.
No, no, it should be, except...
It obviously should.
So, if we take over the roads, and when they're willing us to, having the stormwater be a problem, sir?
Yeah. I'm not sure of the way the HOA reads all that issue, they are doing...
You'd actually take over the roads, yeah, they would be, like down the road, and then they can tear into the stormwater, however you want to, like you have done on the path that I'm proposing, so there'd be your problems.
So, then it would just be, everybody may have said...
No, it's...
They would have said, correct.
So, if you were to maintain extra things for, for the stormwater, would it be a content of the roads?
It's not insane, the roads come on stormwater.
They're two separate things, but they can be negotiated with the city, what the city says, so.
Well, and they have, they have a, leave with, with them?
With who?
With, with the HOA board?
No, but with the attorneys.
For the HOA board? Yeah, well, I mean, we just don't know, I just don't want to, I mean, I'm not paying my fair shares, I'm not, I just don't want to meet, you know, those...
Yeah, you don't want to be double billed, taxed by two different entities, if you will, it's not really a tax, but your homeowners association fees and our city tax.
This, this was an issue, this is a topic at our, one of our recent HOA meetings, about we are part of that, and we do our maintenance, we do these things, we have them, we do our maintenance, and the crazy thing is that it happens within our HOA, which I'm aware of over 15 years. This is something that happens.
I understand, we, next time, let's, just come back to the podium, but, because it's just for recording purposes and for people being able to hear. Thank you, just a reminder. But, I certainly understand why everybody in the Woods subdivision would be concerned that they not be double taxed, that's a very reasonable question, and we will have to look at it, and we have looked at it already, and it'll be, it'll be fairly done. Any other questions on this agenda item? It was a pretty good presentation, and we want to move forward with this as well, I presume?
Well, I know we're going to end up with a workshop when we get the report back on going over for the rate we're going to charge the citizens on their, train their taxes and tax bills. We also need to set up a workshop sometime soon on our RVs, so we can get all that stuff coming to. But, yeah, I look forward to the next commission meeting on the, where we're going to approve Raffetellis, and if it would be going to serve in court.
I would seriously consider gathering as much information as we can there on some of these things that we think may be left out, and try to put a multiplier on the number that we currently have in here, because your work is going to be garbage in, garbage out, we don't want to be realistic, so, so, because I don't really think that these numbers currently, you know, are going to work over a five-year plan or 10-year plan without some sort of escalator in there.
Sorry, Mr. Webb, I know this is our, Mr. Webb, I'm on steady, quick, you can be some...
Yeah, and at some point, when he's looking for the data on this, I wouldn't use this number to come here, I'd use that number times something, some percentage, to be a little more realistic of what it might be by the time we actually get to do the work. Yeah, okay, thank you.
We're all definitely gun-shy of prices escalating. I mean, it's not gun-shy, it's just a reality, it's our new reality. I hate that phrase, but it's where we are.
You know, and one area, one of the frustrating things to me is when I get a quote to do something, and then I find out later on, by the time I get it done through no fault of my own, it's 20 to 25% higher. I would like us to do our due diligence on putting the escalator in upfront, so we don't beat people over the head and then come back to them, oh, well, we screwed that up, didn't charge enough, you know, and I'd rather not, I'd rather go back to them and say, oh, well, we charged it too much, our fund balance is up, and when something happens, you know, we're ready to prepare.
I think what works, there's never, the way we normally do that is we have a capital project, and we have this, we have an escalator, it looks like the capital project is going to be in three years. It goes into the CIP, it's current normal running, three years, but then it goes over to another schedule, that in three years, it has an escalator for whatever we pick, four, five, six percent a year, compound effective after three years, 20%. And then just, during the analysis, we decide to move it a year out, or a year out, it changes the escalator, and it adds another year to it, or it subtracts another year. So, he doesn't have to do a project, a project in this as well. Not one escalator per project typically, but we will apply that escalator, that annual escalator, wherever the project is called about, it's a, and we can work together on that, on how we do it. So, I think the point that it's made, if you don't have the maintenance costs, either begin the escalator, so that's what we, and we need to give a view or someone, when you have the capital project coming in three years, what kind of maintenance is it going to have to start in the project? The issue is, maybe we need to start it today, if we have to do it.
Or accounting for. You know, a lot of it, a lot of it is, is, you know, we do things, we've done a lot of things. One of the things we were looking at at our last assessment study was how much we had spent over the last three years, nearly a million dollars, but that we didn't ever have really properly designated in our funds, we just hadn't properly accounted for it, and we weren't prepared for those reasons. Now, this will give us, you know, proper accounting, we can, we can move forward with more confidence. And when I say proper accounting, it's not that we didn't account for it, it's not that the numbers weren't publicly disclosed and publicly properly handled, but we didn't segregate it out. We used money out of the general fund to do projects that were really stormwater related, which is perfectly legal, perfectly acceptable, we had to do it, but now we want to focus it better. If you come up with a podium meeting.
Nancy, before you start, I've been trying to...
I'm sorry, Roger, I'll pick the floor to Mr. Ecker.
Keep on getting interrupted.
Sorry, Mr. Ecker, the floor is yours.
I've got a written list of local projects that aren't, weren't included in this, some of them I mentioned during this talk, I will take them up and give them to Lee, so they can give them to you to add to the thing, yes, to be reviewed and see what can be done.
Yeah, I consider another statement on that is, the capital improvement program should already have projects above and beyond what's important. I can sort of take the list, do a high-level cost assessment for it, which is exactly what we want to see that be, and make sure that it's insured. Some of those projects, you know, if I drive by the site, and go, I said, maybe we got a R instead of an S B, we'll get my opinion on that as well.
I'm committed with your acquisitions, land acquisitions for some of these projects, I know the High Street here, the water's handed over to Ohio, that south side, everyone high, south side, is completely flooded, I get part of that, it is tight as well, and it is not, it is retained longer, maybe the city should inquire about, any some retention areas? I think that would be great.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to do that, unfortunately, I just, like Derek was saying, those property acquisitions are almost job-specific. That one we can name, because we know what's going on, blah, blah, blah.
And I do, I do believe that the acquisition of these potential properties that would help us with this are fantastic. What I don't want to do is let it derail the current work. I don't think, I don't think the possibility that we could find some properties to acquire being a very good thing, doesn't, doesn't change the value of what we have before us today, and what we'll be looking at at the next meeting. I think we need to move forward quickly, Nancy, this is the third bite of the apple.
I'm going to add, if we start from Lake Island now, because what happens there, when you think the road there, that dramatically changed that parcel to where, I had a few of these conversations with a few people, Mr. Webb, that we are supposed to maintain, obtain our water, and our resource, we have changed that area of land to that water.
Well, when I was, when I was a kid, as a dare, I stuck my, I stuck my leg into that swamp, and it was in that, it was in that swamp for about 10 seconds, and I pulled it out, and there was a leech on it, it was fantastic.
I think Derek could probably do a better job of explaining what our responsibilities are when they're not, because there's certain state laws already in place as far as where the water was naturally going, is, you have every right to continue it down its path, so there's, and then as far as holding our water, we have to do a certain amount of water for a certain period of time. Beyond that, wherever it's been going, it's kind of, so Derek, you could probably answer that question better.
Where, where that water is, is an old sinkhole, that over a period of time has had numerous cars landed in it. And, no, that was, that one right up in the hot, and when they slurry all the water high since out of it, Macy's, that's where they plucked it, it was into that sinkhole. So, all that water drains through the water system into the swamp, which ends up dumping in the Lake Macy.
And I know they got, they permitted, and they've got permission to do that, from whom, how...
They got it from the E P.
Is it allowed by the owner, by the property owner, is allowed?
I don't...
Regardless, right now, the water goes in that problem. About there, just go away.
If potential for the retention areas, maybe even a water, if it is more, the area that...
They could leave a swamp with treated water, but...
Well, I mean, if you want, I'm not going to, this is, I'll just say, if you want all the swamp for retention, so, or any water, so...
Yeah, ones happen naturally, and oftentimes, sinkholes are natural recharge as well, so I understand what Derek's saying, he's saying, you know, if Mother Nature's going to take care of the forest, and it's allowable by law, why should we buy the land to do something?
So, if you have said, this sinkhole, right?
Yes, been there a long time. So, it's like Pearl, Pearl used to be a sinkhole. It became like Pearl.
All right, well, we'll look forward to, to adopting both of these, I hope, at the, at the next commission meeting, we'll have the vote and the discussion then as well. Are we planning on inviting these gentlemen back to the next commission meeting where we'll be actually voting on this, or is this our opportunity for discussion and questions?
Unless you have additional questions, I was not planning.
That's reasonable.
I don't need them to come back.
Okay.
Well, at the meeting, we'd have to officially vote, you know, accept the contract for them to do the work.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
But I just wanted to see, if people were comfortable with having gotten their questions answered, and, and that's fine, I am as well, I just wanted to throw that out there, that if we don't invite them back, additional questions, if you have them, I would address them to the city administrator, see if we could get answers prior to meeting, and share that with us at the, at the meeting. That would be very, that'd be about the only way to do that, rather than invite everybody back, and probably not ask them anything. We don't want to do that to you. It makes you wait three hours to find out whether or not we weren't going to ask you anything. So, thank you again, very much, both of you for being here and sharing your expertise and knowledge, and giving us these proposals to think about, hopefully, tools to use. I think this would be very valuable. After our meeting, after our last commission meeting, where we looked at the Orange Camp Point project, I had a conversation the next day with Mr. Hurley, and I appreciate your calling me, and I appreciate your being here today. If you would like to speak to us, I, I'll give you the floor and, and let you, we can't take any action today, but we can certainly look at things.
Reverend Hurley, Orange Camp Point project, at Surboro, Lake Island. Two things I'd like to, to, to address is, one, the study is very, very interesting. It discusses revenue sufficiency analysis, and it talks about development and strategic plan for increasing revenue and so forth. I would put it to you, just taking advantage of that, that my project would do that, and what I would hope to request at the next meeting is a consideration, not a reconsideration, by the commissioners who didn't approve the plan as it was presented before. And it wasn't really a plan, it was a concept, but I've spoken to several units since, and simply now, two of all, who knew layout, and I recognize the needs for that commercial. Had I had my wits about to be better at the PLDRC meeting, I would have suggested, well, perhaps we need to look at this and move some commercial in here, and move some residential out, and that's what I came up with. In addition to, to that, we've engaged with a couple of other potential buyers in the meantime. I don't want my breath with any of these people, these don't build and suffocate, or control and die, but nevertheless, we have had some enthusiasm from some interested partners, now that we've re-identified the space that was taken up by the condos to potential commercial. And it segues nicely in here, you know, the comments made, and we can go on that, and of course, I identify with some of these, and part here, but I think there's an interesting coalescence between ourselves and yourselves, because of the revenue that you're looking at here, and I did a quick analysis, not this, I think, of the car back, your expense just for debt service, assuming, assuming a 50% blank, and assuming a 3% interest rate, would be $392,700 a year, based on a 3% inflation in weeks over the years. So, the city of Lake Island is going to be shelling at 300 and somewhat, close to $400 a year, just for the repayment of half of the principal and the debt. So, I do think that we can bring value to the citizens of Lake Island across the board from that, so, what I would respectfully request is likely changes that we're going to make, is a reconsideration of the consideration, which of course, completely leaves the ball in your court, but just gives us the opportunity to pursue further conversations down the road. down the road, to see if we can get this project across the I four here, generate revenue for the citizens of the population. One thing I will add to, looking at all of these maps in here, we're not going to eat Lake Helen, I mean, there's no mention of the city of these maps, and, uh, it's been part of, of Lake Helen, I wanna be a part of Lake Helen, and I wanna be a part of the solution to Lake Helen proper, with this stormwater, and of course, polluted water's not an old subject, but, I'm requesting a reconsideration of consideration from, uh, from you all, and I know that can't happen this week, but I just wanted to get my...
Well, as far, as far as our wall maps go, they haven't been updated in a number of years, so...
Been a long time, yeah. Part of the museum.
But, uh, I, I still look forward to hopefully getting some discussion going on, being able to allow a more variety choice of commercial development on the property, rather than just the limited amount that's currently there, and that's my whole thing for vote the last time in favor, is to get the discussion to a wow, more choices.
You got my attention, that's why we...
Like, like Roger, um, I, I did not see what was being presented as, uh, what we were going to do, I saw it as a starting point, and, and my conversation, and I don't know if I, I've said this to a few, but I've said it to some people, is, I think that if two people can find a common point that they can agree on, and they can work towards an end product, both of them, that they can both be happy with, then that becomes a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
Without any conversation whatsoever, we're dead in the water.
Nobody wins.
And, and I think, right out of the gate, I think we both can find a common, uh, island to stand on, and that we can work towards our, our final goal, I think we can, I've always, I've always believed we can, and I think it's a, you know, when we talk about every single problem we have in Lake Helen, every single one of them starts with funding. Now, you know...
It's much easier to spend money than making...
It's, it's, you know, you spend money you don't have, you can't do that for very long.
And vacant land generates very little money. And, I mean, there's no question about that. Uh, again, Mr. Hurley, I, I appreciate your calling me the next day after that meeting, and, and you can call me anytime, my phone's always open, um, as far as procedurally how this would work, and I'm, I'm sure y'all saw the emails, but just to talk about it publicly, um, with, somebody who voted in favor of rejecting the application, or the consideration of, of that, would have to make a motion to reconsider that, so it would be, uh, Commissioner Rutledge, Commissioner Bishop, or myself, um, would have to make a motion to reconsider that, um, the, uh, that's just a procedural thing, that's where it would need to come from, that's for that exact motion, um, the, the land that you own is always there, you're always of, of, you always have valid reason to come before this commission anytime and, and speak to us, um, it doesn't have to be on that exact motion, um, we can consider things at any open meeting, um, things can be brought to us, and, uh, so just know that my, my phone is always open, but also the commission is always available to you as a member of the public, and as a, a landowner here in Lake Helen, and a, with a valuable piece of property, as, as you point out, it's, it's something we need to always be, um, accessible as a commission, I do wanna keep the conversation going as well, um, it's, uh, we, we have our, our comp land that shows this as commercial and not high-density residential, uh, that was very, I think, weighed in very heavily, um, in our, in the decision-making process, um, but we gotta keep looking at it, we gotta keep trying to find a way that works, um, and the point has been made several times that, you know, we can't wish that, um, certain types of development would just show up and go in there, uh, we can wish it, but, but we can't make it happen, we can't make develop, uh, you know, we can't make Publix or Walmart wanna put something there, we just can't, uh, we could wish, but we can't make it happen, neither can Mr. Hurley, he's, he's trying to find things that can actively, where he can find active, um, businesses and active commercial enterprises to go there, um, we have to have our, our feet firmly planted in reality as well, and we don't wanna seem like we're not, um, but we are coming at it from two very different points of view, as we've spoken about numerous times, I mean, you're the developer, I wouldn't ever put the word greedy in front of that, if it ever, if it ever felt like it was coming from me, it wasn't, oh, you're a developer, you have a self-interest in that, in where that property goes, there is nothing wrong with that, that's what made America, um, nothing else, that's what makes capitalism work, nothing else, is self-interest, there's nothing wrong with self-interest, that's what gets people out of bed in the morning, um, if you're not interested in allaying your hunger, you never get out of bed and have breakfast, that's self-interest, that's just the way things actually work, um, so you're being here, you're looking for a way to make this profitable for you, God bless you, um, and, and I don't ever wanna feel like anything majority comes from this commission, um, or from anybody, really, that, that you are, are trying to make this work and make this profitable, um, for you and the people that'll be buying it from you, and, and for us as a city, we're all a part of that, um, so, we always have our door and our floor open, um, to anybody in the city, and you're an important part of the city, so thank you for coming back, thank you for, uh, keeping a positive attitude with it, I really do appreciate it, um, and we'll, we'll speak some more, thank you. I believe that's all the business, unless anybody, any commissioners have any additional comments or announcements they wanna make, Harry, none, staff?
None.
None? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I was very pleased Mr. Hurley called me the next day, I don't want to shut this whole kind of stuff in my eyes, um, I, I know you were, and I, one of the hardest things, sitting here, that night, trying to, I thought I was pushing it, but, of course, was...
I'm not trying to say close, but I'm saying this, I know that, I mean, I feel the same, I know this is true, I wanna keep the conversation going, and I know it wasn't a sudden conversation, it was just thinking of...